Fourth, 2021. And welcome all who have joined us today. And we, uh, we've changed our, uh, starting time here this evening to five o'clock. So we're glad you all have, uh, been here, came here this evening for our meeting. So we'll start our work session with, uh, our city administrator will, uh, has one item of business and then we'll move into our number one item.
Mayor and council, we just have started a new management intern on the, with the administration. Teresa, will you come up? Teresa's a recent graduate of the BYU MPA program and she called the other day, uh, looking for an opportunity to cut her teeth and learn a little bit about local government. So, um, she's coming on as an unpaid intern and then usually we give them a little stipend when they're done with their service to say thank you. So we'll be working something out with her, but just wanted to introduce her and give her a second to introduce herself to you because you'll be seeing her around.
Thank you. I got this connection from my husband, so I should be thanking him, shouldn't I? I graduated with my MPA from BYU in December and I'm trying to find something to give me experience. And so Scott was one of the first people I talked to when I called several city managers in, in our county and then up in Salt Lake County. And he has been wonderful to work with. He's bending over backwards to help me, so I'm very grateful for that. And I'm willing to do whatever I need to do if it's picking up a pencil off the floor so that I can get some kind of experience. But that's where I'm at right now. I haven't worked outside the home except for volunteering for a while. Before I did go home, I was an accountant. So I'm trying to get back into the field and Denise has been wonderful to work with. I'm helping her with some financial stuff. Balancing budgets is kind of fun. So, so thank you for, um, letting me introduce myself.
Welcome. Glad you're here.
Thank you. Glad you're here.
If we can help you in any way, that, let us know.
It's just, it's interesting because, I mean, you mentioned Scott was responsive. He doesn't ever pick up my calls.
I can work on that maybe, see, you know? I'm just teasing.
Now, we know that's false.
We brought her along to coach me to help me out.
And tell us about your family and where you live.
Spanish Fork is where I live. I have been there for 20 years. My husband teaches at the Y and he's, he teaches in public administration and he got his MPA from the Y back in the nineties. So it's kind of been in the family. My father has an MPA. So it's been in the family for a long time. And my father, in fact, back in the seventies and eighties, I grew up in Riverside, California, he was assistant city manager in Riverside.
So it's in your blood?
Sorry?
It's in your blood?
Yes, yes. It just feels comfortable to be a government advocate or just feels comfortable government and I, and being a government advocate's always been a big deal with our family where we love politics. So yeah, so this is a natural fit. In fact, I graduated with my daughter. She got her MPA at the same time. Huge help, huge help because I hadn't been to school in 25 years.
Yeah, good for you.
Yeah, so four kids, three girls and a boy. And when the youngest, our boy, hit ninth grade, I decided I need to do something. I was getting really bored.
I'll do some.
And I thought, maybe I can earn some money now. I mean, I'm still all about the volunteer, but it'd be nice to earn a little bit of money now too.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, our item this evening for our work session is ranked choice voting and, uh...
We have a representative here and I, sorry, I didn't catch his name. Come on up.
Taylor.
Taylor. Taylor's got some hard copies for you. He's going to hand out and then he's going to show this presentation for you, uh, to, listen to, review and understand. If this is something we are going to do this year, we need to give the county notice by the end of the week. So, um, if you want to deliberate after the presentation and see if it's something we want to pursue for this year, then we can have that discussion.
Hello, thank you for, for having me tonight. I will try to be brief but thorough. I know you have a big agenda ahead of you, so I'm happy to please stop me at any time if you have any questions. I will go ahead and walk through a short PowerPoint. Uh, and then I think Kyler, we have just a really brief video to show and then I'm happy to take any questions you have then, also during the presentation. So ranked choice voting, uh, we have had two cities that both opted into a pilot program for ranked choice voting back in 2019. Vineyard and Payson Cities both used ranked choice voting. The pilot program, uh, that they first opted into has been expanded and extended by the Utah Legislature. And now, uh, we have 20 cities already, uh, in Utah that are going to try ranked choice voting in their 2021 municipal elections. So with that as a backdrop, go ahead and work through these slides. Can you go to the next one, please, Kyler? So why ranked choice voting? Why would you change your election process? My background is I worked in the state elections office under former Lieutenant Governor Greg Bell. And in my role there, one of the things I did was interface with county clerks throughout the state, uh, to help them dial in their election process and make sure that they were compliant, uh, with state and federal law and that they were running, uh, elections as efficiently as possible. So why would we want to change our election process? Well, ranked choice voting provides a few, uh, really important key advantages, especially for cities. First is it provides taxpayer savings. With ranked choice voting, you save half the cost of your election. You only need to run one election cycle. There is no need for a primary election cycle with ranked choice voting. You only have the one general cycle in the fall. Uh, so also that leads to shorter, less expensive campaigns for city candidates. Uh, next, it's ready to implement. Uh, the state has certified and approved the software for ranked choice voting, specifically in your county. Utah County has already used it. It is ready to go and Josh Daniels and, uh, former county clerk, now I think commissioner, Amelia Powers Gardner, she's a huge proponent of this. So it is ready to go. Next slide, please. So with ranked choice voting, voters more fully express their will. This is something we do all the time. We rank our favorites. You know, what's your favorite ice cream? What's your favorite candy bar? What's your favorite NFL team? We, voters are used to ranking things. They're used to ranking their favorites. This is a very familiar concept to voters. And what's nice about ranked choice voting is it's in a plurality system. It's often all or nothing. It's a zero sum game. In ranked choice voting, voters can pick their favorites in order and their vote is never wasted. Also, uh, we always have a majority winner with ranked choice voting. Voters, winners in ranked choice always have a 50% plus majority, which means, uh, the winner better reflects the voters, uh, in the jurisdiction. And then finally, it eliminates the spoiler effect. Uh, oftentimes, you know, if in a zero sum campaign, uh, candidates are incentivized to simply tear down their opponent. Not, not so with ranked choice. With ranked choice, if I can't be your favorite, can I be your number two? It's about building support for me or for a candidate, not building opposition to another candidate. Next slide, please. Okay. Uh, I mentioned that in 2019, Payson and Vineyard both tried ranked choice. Afterward, Utah County conducted, uh, a survey of the voters who participated and it was overwhelmingly positive. Voters had an excellent experience. They thought it was easy to use, they liked it, and they thought it should be used in more elections. Also, uh, candidates who used it had a very positive experience and would like to see it continued. Okay, so this last session, because of the success of ranked choice in 2019, the legislature expanded the program and, uh, actually in 2020, the legislature and Governor Herbert then encouraged all cities statewide to try it. Next slide, please. And then this last March in 2021, uh, House Bill 75 was passed. House Bill 75 further expanded the program, uh, and cleaned up a few things and clarified some things in terms of how a city would choose to opt in to the ranked choice pilot. And the new date by which you would need to provide notice to elect to opt in is May 10th. Go ahead. Okay, so how, if you decide that this is something that you want to try here in Pleasant Grove, uh, the way it would work is you as a council, uh, would take a vote and then you would need to communicate, uh, your intent to opt in by May 10th. That can be a letter, that can be an email, uh, that can be any kind of communication from your city to the elections office and to your county clerk. Okay? These are all the cities, uh, as of today, that have formally voted to opt in to ranked choice voting. So like I said, 20 cities right now. Uh, we're doing presentations throughout the state tonight, uh, and we will definitely have a few more and we would love to count Pleasant Grove among them. I just ran through that. So can we go ahead and put up that video, Kyler, and then I'll take any questions you So just by way of background, this is a video that Vineyard City produced and posted to their social media and sent out to their voters, uh, in advance of their 2019 ranked choice election. Can I take any questions in the meantime?
Vineyard is participating in a pilot program for ranked choice voting in the 2019 municipal election, the first of its kind in Utah. Ranked choice voting is different from traditional voting in that you rank the candidates on the ballot from your favorite to least favorite. Check it out. Let's say we're voting for one open spot on city council. The candidates are blue, green, orange, red and yellow. This first column is one voter's ballot. Their first choice is blue, second, green, third, red, fourth, yellow and fifth, orange. The second column represents a different voter's choices. Their first choice is red, second, yellow, third, blue, fourth, green and fifth, orange. Each column here represents a different voter's ballot. After votes are completed, the candidate who receives more than 50% of first choice votes will be declared a winner. If no candidate receives more than 50% of first choice votes, then we will proceed to round by round ranked choice voting. As you can see here, blue received more than 50% of the votes in the first round, which means they are declared the winner. But what if we're running an election for two open city council spots? Here's how that would work. Because blue already won, we won't include them when counting the votes for the second position. In round one of counting for the second position, no other color has received more than 50% of the votes. We will proceed to round two. At this point, the candidate with the fewest votes is eliminated. In this case, orange must be removed. Unlike traditional voting with ranked choice voting, the votes for the eliminated candidate, orange, are transferred to the voter's next preferred candidate. By transferring the votes from orange to their second choice, green receives more than 50% of votes to win. And what if we're going to elect somebody for a third open spot on city council? Here, we'll add orange back in because they didn't have enough votes to win the second spot, but still have a chance of winning a different open spot. Now, we start the ballot counting over again to fill the third spot. As you can see, red wins as the third color. So although the ballot looks different this year, it's simple now that you've learned how it works and why ranking your preferred candidates matters. Learn more at vineyardvotes.com.
Okay, happy to take any questions, uh, you may have.
I do, I have questions.
I don't have a question.
I do. You want me to ask?
Yeah.
We can't have you come all this way and not have at least one or two questions.
Please, I mean, yeah, I just, I breezed, I ran through that presentation.
That just means that he's frantically trying to come up with a question.
I always, I've always had these since caucus night because I'm a precinct, used to be a precinct chair.
Yeah.
And vice chair. Um, some of the problems we always ran into, some, some people, right, they usually only have one or two favorites, right? And so do they lose their voice after it goes to the third round? What do you, what do you tell them?
Uh, no, in ranked choice, you can vote, so say there's five candidates on the ballot and you only like two of them. You only have to vote for the two in whatever order. You, you can vote for as few or as many as are on the ballot as you like.
But if it hits the third or fourth round, their ballot's already gone, right? Correct?
Well, if neither of their first two choices is in play, then correct, right? And that's the voter's choice, right? If there's five candidates and I only like two of them and I do not want to have a say if it comes down to, you know, um, you know, C, D or E, it, that's my choice. I can choose not to vote for them, uh, just like today, you know, we could choose not to vote on the ballot. So if I'm only willing to lend my support behind one or two candidates, that, I can do that. Um, but just like under plurality voting, um, so for example, in the Republican primary, if I really say like Greg Hughes, uh, but I have a sense that it's going to come down between John Huntsman Jr. and Spencer Cox, you know, I'm forced to make a tough choice, right? I really want to vote for the person I like, but I also want to have a say between the two most viable candidates, right? But in ranked choice, you don't have to make that decision. You're, that dynamic is not in play because I can still rank my favorite number one, but I still have an opportunity to weigh in for every candidate. So yet, I guess that's a long answer to your question, but it still is up to the voter. They don't lose their voices inherent to the process.
And then, uh, the majority, how many, how many did you have in your test group last year? Was it three or four cities of Utah County?
Uh, two.
Two?
Payson and Vineyard.
Yeah, and how many of those reached their, were all of them, did they hit the majority?
Yes.
And what, and what round did they hit the majority?
Yeah.
Ooh, that's a good question. I don't know the answer to that.
That's what I'm saying is, did, did they hit the majority right off the bat or did it take the second or third round to hit that majority?
I don't know. That happens instantly.
Okay.
By definition, they hit the, they have to hit the majority.
Right.
And, and so it doesn't really matter if, it matters at what point of the rounds did they hit the, did they hit the majority? That's what's interesting.
They, they have, they had three, oh, three seats and, and I, I mean, I remember reading about, I don't remember the details of how many rounds, but it was more than three rounds before they got all three. I want to say it was five rounds to get all three seats filled, but...
Can I ask you a question, Mayor? So why the change? Why, why, you know, I mean, we're going to, we're going to be asked these questions, right?
Sure.
Um, why, why, why change? This has been the series of democracy for 200 years, what?
I think that's the exact question, uh, Councilman. I think to start off with, we have a system, we have a process, uh, it works, so why change it? I get that. Um, the first thing I would respond with is you can save half the cost of running elections in your city. You only have to run one cycle instead of two cycles. With ranked choice, there is no need to run a primary. You don't have to pay for a primary cycle. Uh, also, it reduces the amount of time you have candidates out, uh, cluttering, you know, your city with signs and other materials. It shortens that period for the candidates, uh, which could make, you know, the process more accessible for everybody. Um, also ranked choice more fully expresses the will of voters and in my experience, it encourages a more civil issue-based campaign. I think instead of just trying to, to say tear down, you know, council, council member Jensen here, right? Instead, I want to build up myself and the chance for me to be, you know, your number two. Because of course, I know, you know, council member Jensen has been here, voters like him, I can't beat him, but I can at least maybe be the voter's number two. So instead of spending my time and money trying to run a negative campaign to tear anyone down, I'm, I'm running a more positive issue, uh, self-focused campaign. And again, that's, it doesn't eliminate all negative campaigning, I'm not saying that.
Right.
But overall, it just creates a, a structure and a process that incentivize, incentivizes a civil campaign.
Okay, thank you.
I guess my, my concern is it seems really complicated and my goal would be to keep this process as simple as possible for the voters. I've spoken to candidates involved with ranked choice voting. They didn't even know how they won or lost. They, they didn't even know the process and that was a candidate who was involved in going through it. So I'm just concerned that it becomes confusing. It becomes, uh, just no one knows who to vote for and what to do and how they get out. I, it just, I don't know, to me, I just want to keep the process as simple as possible and it just seems really confusing for, for voters and even for candidates who are involved that, of how this whole thing is calculated. And I guess I'm asking, similar to what Todd is, is just why the change and why, and I understand what you're saying with the, in the cost savings, that's definitely, you know, a plus. Um, I just, to me, I don't, I don't know if that's worth it in my mind to give up the, the simplicity of the one of the most votes wins.
Yeah, I, if I may respond to that, I think that is, you know, frankly, the single most common, uh, reason why cities are not opting into the pilot. And it's simply because, ah, it's just a new process, there's some doubt, uncertainty. And so I completely understand why we would be resistant to changing that process, especially our elections, you know, which is a, uh, sacred process by which voters elect their city leaders. So I completely understand that. What I would say is we do know, based on data from polling post-elections in Vineyard and Payson, is voters loved it. They had a very positive experience. They wanted to use it again and they had no problem understanding and using the process. And as candidates, even, we also saw the poll, candidates, nearly 90% of candidates liked it, thought it was a great process, wanted to use it again. And these aren't just cities far flung in other corners of the state. These are, you know, Payson and Vineyard, right here in Utah, in your same county. Um, and so that's why it's a pilot, right? It's a pilot program. Try it out. Um, there is money available from the state to help support outreach and education to voters. Uh, if you have a bad experience or it doesn't go well, you do, do not have to do it again. This is not a permanent choice. It's simply a one cycle opt-in to participate in the pilot.
Would you, do you have the data available for the cities with the polling on the residents and, or the voters in that city and also the candidates? Do you have that data available so we can read?
Yeah, yeah, that was on the, in the slide deck and I have a more thorough data set. I'm happy to share with you.
One of the, one of the advantages I, that I see, having run this time, I, uh, it shortens the process considerably.
Yeah.
And that, I mean, one of the things that I heard when I was running is, when is this going to be over?
Yeah.
And, and when are those stupid signs going down?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that, this would shorten it down considerably.
Yes.
Plus save, save the costs.
Correct. Yeah, there would be no need for a primary election.
Exactly.
And so candidates would not need to file to run, nor would they need to start campaigning until, uh, you know, the end of summer, say, September.
Yes.
And, and so it would eliminate that additional municipal cycle, August, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, thank you.
August.
Yeah. So I think that's a key advantage in the cost savings. Um, that's why, you know, again, it's a pilot program. Try it out. If it doesn't go well in the city and if your voters don't have a positive experience, then certainly, you know, you will go back to the normal process for 2023.
You have other questions, one?
Yeah, one more question. And so to Sid's point, the education of the community, so that would be run by ranked choice voting?
There are resources available from Utah ranked choice voting, absolutely. In addition, the legislature has appropriated funds for cities who opt into the pilot. Um, I don't know the exact amount right now, but it's around $200,000 of state funds that are available to cities who opt in for voter outreach and education campaigns, you know, to produce videos like the one for Vineyard and, and those types of efforts. So that money is available and it's based on voters in your city.
Okay.
And given that, you know, Pleasant Grove is potentially one of the li- larger cities that may participate, those funds would be allocated based on the number of voters in your city.
Okay. And that would just be in, this is very similar to what Vineyard did? This is what?
Whatever you choose to do.
Okay.
You would...
So that would be run by the city?
It, it would, however you choose, the funds would be available to the city. Uh, you could choose to have the Utah County Elections Office help you produce that content. You could do it on your own. That would be completely up to your city.
Okay. That would be Kathy.
That would be the county.
Any other questions, Council?
So, but we have to decide by May 10th.
Yeah, so if we're through it, we, we through, thank you.
Yeah, so you would, may I respond? Sorry.
Yes, you bet.
Um, you would need to take a vote by your city council, uh, and if, you know, the vote is affirmative, you would then send a communication to, uh, the Utah County Elections Office and to the State Elections Office. Again, that can be a letter from Kathy, it can be an email, uh, that just indicates, hey, we are choosing to opt in to the 2021 ranked choice pilot program. And that would need to be, uh, received by those offices by May 10th, which I believe is a week away. Monday.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Now, Scott and Tina, if I, if, if we agreed, can we put this on the agenda tonight because we had this discussion? Or we're going to have to have us?
Forty-eight hours.
Okay.
So if they require a vote, you can't take the vote tonight because it was on the agenda as simply a discussion item. You can have a quick special meeting with 24 hours' notice and advertise that that's the question on the agenda.
Wait, so it is a vote?
Yeah, we have to vote.
It sounds like if we're going to do it, we need an official vote. If the consensus is, it's not a direction you want to go, we probably don't need a meeting to confirm that.
Right.
If that makes sense.
So Council, do, do we need to further discuss with ourselves here?
I think so.
Yeah.
Can we do that?
Well, let's start, well, let's, if we've got, uh, Brent?
I'm in favor of it.
You're in favor?
I'm in favor.
Okay, we got one. Diana?
Can we talk about it?
Yeah, we, we're, that's what we're, that's why we're here.
Brett voted.
Brent is so decisive, so quickly.
We're not voting, I just wanted to know what you think about it, okay?
You're not voting.
We're not voting.
We're not voting. We're just, we're just seeing if we need to take it to a vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so on the plus, the plus points are, uh, cost savings. Um, the money that would, uh, be in our, um, pocket for voter education, the timeframe of, uh, campaigning. Um, I think, I think as a, a resident, I, well, for example, there have been often many elections where I have thought, oh my gosh, how long do, you know, how long is this going to go? Um, and I'm not saying that because of a campaign that I've been involved in, but I know just regular citizens have a hard time with the length of campaign time. Uh, I think the, on the con side, it is just something so new and when I see the numbers of the, um, approval rating, it, it, I mean, that's on the, the plus side as well. Uh, residents that did it liked it. So it's just new and different.
So would you like to try it? Yes or no?
That's actually on the plus side is that it, this is a, it's not a definitive for the rest of eternity. This is a pilot, so...
It's, it is, yeah, we just pilot.
I think for me, Mayor, number one, I don't like to make a decision that affects so many people in six days.
Yeah.
That's a- almost unfair, right? That, that six days before we have to make a decision, and we have to make a decision tonight, you know? And, and so, you know, I think it's, I think it's confusing. I don't think the, I don't think I understood it, um, very well. I don't think, so I think, I think we really need to make our, we want to make our election laws, especially in our city, um, as simple as possible. I don't think we want to overcomplicate it. Maybe that's education, maybe that's right, but, but we, we got six days to do it and I'm not, I, I, that's not fair. Um, it, as a new process, um, I, I think we want to ensure that we enable in, election integrity, uh, not change our process, especially after a heated debate that we had in November. Um, and so I think for all of those reasons, I don't think this is the year to, um, to spring something on that the city. I think we need to, I think we need to learn more about it. I think more cities need to learn more about it. Um, and then, and then at some future point, if we feel like that's something we want to look at, that great. But I, to, to spring this on us and make us, um, want us to make a decision in six days to change our election laws, I think is, is not, not appropriate.
Okay, I got you down on that.
To be, to be fair to ranked choice voting, they actually tried to come in and we didn't let them, so.
We weren't that interested.
It wasn't their fault.
I'm not blaming anybody.
Councilmember Jensen?
So, I'll just give my two cents really quick, right? So I've been there on caucus nights, RIS precinct chair, vice chair, you name it, right? And spending countless minutes, I won't even say minutes, hours, trying to, right, explain to them, what, what option do you want to take tonight, right? And sometimes we ended up with ranked choice, right? And then to, to watch my friends, neighbors pull their, pull their hair out on the back table, trying to figure out, right, because it's, it's not, we don't, we didn't have the computers, right? Trying to figure all this out, and then try to explain to people that this is who won, yes, that's why I asked you the question, yes, you may have only put down one or two people, and went to the third, fourth, fifth, sixth round, and your ballot, right, is, is done, and they felt that they were getting cheated, right? You had to go through all this. And so I'm, I agree that, I would, I would love to see that list of cities and see how it goes this year, to see if it, if they are truly happy with that. I think, I think last year, like you said, we had two, and this year it looks like Utah County were up, up from two, obviously. And so I'd like to see how that goes, just to be fair to our citizens and that, so.
Sid?
Yeah, I think I'd like to see a couple more cities go through an election cycle with this and just see how it goes. I mean, I'm open in the future to, as more cities come on and kind of work through the kinks, I just don't think it may be the appropriate time this year to do it, so.
Okay, thank you. Well, it looks like we will not have further discussion on it then, and we'll give it, we'll wait for the next election cycle, I think that's.
I would like, like you said, I think you're sending the data, the data sets to us?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to see that, and then, of course, after this election.
Okay, thanks for your input. Thank you for coming this evening.
Yeah, thank you. We'll be back.
Okay. Well, with that, that ends our main thing we were gonna discuss this evening, and so we'll go right to our staff business. And we were gonna change this up a little bit on our staff, so if.
Library.
And especially since we just, Scott put out to all of us the, your reports, and so if you have something that you would like to add, that you'd like to present to the council this evening, please raise your hand and I'll have you take the floor. If not, we'll move on. Boy, I thought there'd be. Yes, seven hands waiting to, geez, Daniel, you've got, come on.
The Daniel Show is during our city council meeting, so.
Yeah, no kidding.
Just a reminder, May 25th is gonna be our employee appreciation luncheon, which is, I sent this in the email, but just wanted to make sure.
Scott, epic.
Epic. The epic employee recognition luncheon. We are gonna hold this in the fire bays, so that we'll be able to, you know, kind of keep the bay doors open, we'll be undercover of a roof, but we will have some fresh air blowing through there. So this is to encourage all employees, but want to make you aware that we, we will be closing down city facilities, getting that echo there, for two hours. So from 11:30 to 1:30 that day, we will be closing all city facilities so that we can make sure each employee can attend. That's our goal, is to really show some things to them and allow them to have those two hours off and, and come to this. So we, we have, we'll be doing some barbecuing, some hot dogs, hamburgers. Eric has volunteered, our city council elected officials, to be burger flippers and hot dog cookers.
Cool.
We're in.
And executive staff will be helping out.
You volunteered us all?
With that as well.
Good job.
That's perfect.
I may need some lessons.
We have an employee that's volunteered to smoke some pork, and so we'll have some pulled pork as well. We've had another employee volunteer to do Dutch oven desserts, and so this is gonna be a great meal. We will be handing out team member of the year, as well as a few other awards, and then also the service awards for longevity here in the city.
I'm sorry, Scott, what was the date again?
It is September 25th.
September? May?
May 25th.
He just wants us to not be there.
That's Tuesday, right? On a Tuesday?
You're right about that, I'm ready for football. It is Tuesday, May 25th, it's actually from 12 to 1, but we'll be closing down the city facilities to give employees time to get where they need to go, so.
Right, yeah.
Any questions?
No, I'll have spe- special aprons for the council.
We, we also will have door prizes, so we'll have a, if you remember last time, we had a, a drawing for door prizes to encourage employees to attend. Last year's was wonderful, we had great feedback, the employees really appreciated it, so we're looking to match that again this year.
Sorry, one more.
Yeah.
Apparently this year, we've, I've been hinted at that we need to bring along a, instead of us three guys, we need some influence from our better half.
When you're, when you're buying the stuff?
Yeah, for the prizes, that we need to have a, a lady with us.
Well, and I don't know who's volunteering, but that would be awesome.
I'll look for a volunteer.
Scott, can we, is there a way that we can verify, because I know there was some question last time about retirement dates and things like that? Is there a way we can verify, like with the director and Kyler, and make sure that everyone's?
Yeah.
You know how we got a few questions?
Yeah, we did this last time too, and sometimes this gets, just gets a little funny on us, because we have a computer that tells us when a hire date is, but for some people, that's when they were hired full-time, and maybe they were part-time with the city for three years before then. So what we do is we give all the, the dates to the department heads, and then we have them verify with the employees that that's how long they've been here. I think last year we had two that just kind of slipped through the cracks, as far as that concerned. We, we made sure that they were able to receive the little cash award that comes with that. But, yeah, we are trying to be proactive to nab as many of those as we can, because for some, it's pretty straightforward, your full-time date is when you started and you're good to go. We have some people that have bounced back and forth between part-time and full-time and sometimes, or they've worked for five years and then took five years off and came back and worked five more years, so those are the types of things we try to get figured out as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
So that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, well, we still have about 20 minutes if we, for a break, so let's shift gears here a little bit, and we'll go in and give Denise a, have her give us her presentation on our, on our budget for 2021 and 2022.
Just as she comes up here, obviously, we've reviewed this, this is our last two budget work sessions, so Denise is just gonna do kind of high-level recap, there are a couple new things, but most of this is old information to you. She'll cover all the new information, and then if you just have questions on some of the old information, we're not necessarily gonna go line by line on the old information. Do you want me to hand that out, Denise?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't.
We caught you off-guard by moving you up.
Yeah, so those are all.
That means we'll get out of here sooner.
No, that would be if Marty was presenting, we'd get out way earlier.
Some people may need to leave early because of all the seaweed they consume.
Kyler's gonna see if he can bring this up, but I'm just gonna.
Just for everybody's information, the Pleasant Grove Viking baseball team is undefeated, and they are at this minute playing the undefeated AF caveman.
Is that a motion to dismiss, or are we going to game?
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm just gonna talk about a couple of the pages that Scott gave to you, and then, and then if we get that brought up, we can talk about a few more, but the one is the one-pager, or we call it revenue and uses. Nothing much has changed on there, and as you'll see, we still have unallocated dollars of $12,568, and so, I mean, we can, between now and when we adopt the budget, the last meeting in June, we can allocate that to something, or we don't need to, and it just stays there and ends up in the fund. And then a couple of changes, if you look down at the capital projects, and we've talked a lot about this the last time, we talked about making some changes, we had the backstop for the pickleball project, we had that at 600. You remember, you advised to put that at 300 or use it for additional fund balance. The medians, we got some more pricing, so that was at 90, we have 80,000 in there. And the last one is sidewalk improvements on 300 South Locust Avenue, and council member Lamone asked that, asked us to add that to there. And so those are some changes on that, if you have any questions, and Sid could. I'll clarify that one, so I had a resident reach out and send some pictures of some crumbling sidewalk in the area, and I thought with the improvements going in with the pickleball courts and more traffic, that it was, it was in pretty bad condition, that we wanted those to be improved for safety and just for the amount of traffic that's gonna be coming in, so I sent that to Marty and Scott just to see if that was a possibility, so that's why that one's on there.
This is your address?
And his, and his 25,000, that's just an estimate?
Yeah, that's a, well, that's an estimate from Marty on, on the replacement of the sidewalk, but was that just 300 South? That didn't cover Locust, like the sidewalk in front of Veterans?
Is that right, Marty?
What was the, what was the resident concerned about? Was it on 300 or Locust?
Well, he just sent me a picture of. It's on 300.
Oh, is it?
But on the, on the west side of Locust?
Oh, no.
No, well, so what's happening is.
No, no, on these.
No, it's 300.
Our property. So we're talking about.
So we have the new, we'll have new curb gutter sidewalk for the pickleball park.
Okay, that's Locust.
Yep, Locust, and then we're gonna have old sidewalk to 300 South. This proposal is to have new sidewalk from 300, the, from Locust on the north side of Veterans Park up to the swim pool parking lot. So if we do that at 25,000, we still have this old section left that's gonna be on Locust between the new pickleball courts.
In the corner of the.
And this, so I don't know if it's something we want to consider, if we're gonna do it, we just do it all, but we don't have a price for that, just, I mean.
I went up and looked at it, and definitely the, went up along there, and really, the, the Parks Department, talking to them, would like to eliminate that park strip that's there on Locust, and then that way, and we, if we took out the four-foot walk and then put in a six-foot walk, and then move a fire hydrant back behind the walk, that would tie that all in.
Okay.
But that's probably, what do you think, Marty? Did you were thinking about that when I, what that'd be, 70,000?
I think you're looking probably right around 60 to 70,000 to do all of it. The 25,000 that was just on 300 South, I just kind of looked at some square footage numbers, and I think we're around 60 to 70,000 to do everything.
Was that a four-foot walk? Sorry, Todd, is that a four-foot walk?
Six, six foot.
Now, I'm gonna do a six-foot walk.
On 300 South?
On Locust and on 300 South.
Okay.
Okay.
So the, the 25,000 is 45,000 short, right?
If we're gonna do all of it.
We're already short 25. Well, we just barely added that.
That's right, yeah, 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 yeah.
So with that today, I'm saying, well, let's do the whole thing.
Well, yeah, I mean, health, safety, and welfare have always been advocate for sidewalks, right? I mean, it's a plus, so.
Well, and I can see that it combines the, the park with the.
With veterans and.
And that's all new six-foot walk there, so that'd just bring it down.
I'm, I'm with the mayor.
Because you could have people parking over in that area to walk to the pickleball courts, you could have kids riding, I mean, there's just a lot, there's gonna be an increase in traffic, I think, with the pickleball courts, and the parking's full, over on the rec center side, they would park there, and I just think it's.
Yeah, let's, let's fix it.
If, if you, if you look at, that, that walk's in pretty good shape, the four-foot, except we've gone and we've milled it where it's sunk and out of, and so, but, but it does need to be, I mean, some of, you know, we got bad walks all over town, but I think if we're doing it, hey, let's, and.
Let's finish it right.
Denise does magic of finding some more money for us.
Sure.
And we still, and we still have that reserve.
We still have some reserves.
Because you pulled the 300,000, we do have 57,000 unallocated.
Yeah, that we could make that change.
So we can just move that in there, that gives us $82,000, which by Marty's estimate should be enough to do the whole project. So when we bring this back to you, the first Tuesday in June, when we have our public hearing on our budget, will account for the whole sidewalk to be done.
That's good.
That's sounding good for everybody.
Yeah.
Brent, you okay with that?
Yeah, that's good.
You okay with that, Sid?
Yeah.
Let me just jump in, we did something new tonight, that this is something that I'd like moving forward, is that when we have a request from a council member to do something like this, that you, you can get ahold of us and say, hey, you know, get us a price on this, we can get a price, but when we put it for presentation to the council, whoever's made the request will put the council member's name, or names, if there's more than one of you, or if the mayor makes the request, we'll, we'll put it on there, or if staff is driving it, we'll put staff next to it, so that it's clear where this is coming from, and so the, the person that's making the request can articulate the reasons why.
That's great.
So that's, that's how we're gonna do it moving forward.
So we'll thank councilman, council member Lamone for bringing that to our kitchen, because it will really finish that off good.
Yeah.
That is good. I have one question. Pleasant Grove Boulevard is getting, it's getting busier and busier. I mean, it's, it's, if, I don't know if you've ever tried to get to the freeway at 5 o'clock, but it's.
Don't, don't go that way.
I come, I come, I'm, I'm coming the other way, but, but question, is there, what is our, our capability plan, I guess, of extending that, widening that?
So UDOT's coming in two weeks to give you a presentation on the widening of Pleasant Grove Boulevard.
See, you're just marvelous.
But just their piece, their portion, though.
Well.
That's just from the freeway.
Yes, so that, that's not our portion, which would be North County Boulevard to State Street, that's our ownership.
Right, right, right.
We're hoping one day to have UDOT take that as a state road and then widen it.
Okay, good. I guess, so there, so, so I guess the question is, if, if we're gonna hear that proposal, do we need to spend money on the medians if we're gonna eventually maybe make that smaller?
Yeah, the medians we're referring to are not accounted for, the median between the interchange and North County Boulevard is not in this number.
Got it.
They, because they will.
This is, this is North County Boulevard and.
No, no, this is just PG Boulevard from North County Boulevard.
To State.
There's, there's five medians there.
Our road.
So it's for those medians.
Okay, cool, all right.
The other thing that I gave you, so I'm just gonna point out those three things, we talked about, I think it was council member Williams, wanted to see the projects as we're talking about raising our utility rates.
Oh, yeah.
And so they're on each individual page in the document, but right in front of the enterprise, it's gonna be on page 24, but I gave you a hard copy of it, that just summarizes the enterprise fund, capital projects, and so that'll give you an idea of what we're looking at. And if you look at water, we have the Gateway Well at $4 million, and we've actually applied for funding, and so that is anticipated, that if we get that bonding through the division of, I think it's Water Resources or Drinking Water, then that we'll be doing that gate well project. If not, then we're gonna have to find another funding source, but we've, we applied for that like the middle of April.
Where is the Gateway Well? Is that down by? In the flats?
We're changing you into the Boulevard Well, it's actually just a little bit north of Evermore, I'm more in County Boulevard.
Yeah.
It's actually right next to the Mayfield Town Home Condominiums.
Yeah.
We have a detention basin there, on the west side of the road by Mayfield Town Home Condominiums, and it's gonna be on that property.
I'll change the name.
You should, you should call it the Proctor Well.
And then the other, the other item I gave you was just a summary, as we're talking about the utility rates, just the average monthly rate comparison that I gave you, just so you can kind of look at what we're proposing and what that means for the average consumer in our city. And the fee schedule is in the document, the only changes that we have listed on the fee schedule right now, that starts on page, is, we have some cemetery changes, which I put those in gray, and that's on page 31 that you can look at, and then the utility rate changes are also in gray, and they start on page 45, if you want to look at those later, and they're in gray, any of the utility rate changes are in gray, so that you don't have to read this 15-page fee schedule looking for what we changed, those are the two areas.
So any other questions for Denise?
Just one question, so if we approve and the project begins, is there an end time before the, when the money has to be spent on a capital project?
This 1.9, is that what you're talking about, or Marty? This one point nine, is that what you're talking about, or Marty's? Talking about any of those one point nine projects. No, they, um, what I've asked, and we'll, um, in two weeks, we're gonna ask to do a budget amendment, so, uh, we can get that money out of the general fund and into the, uh, capital improvement fund, so that if some of those projects are ready to go, they can go if we're still waiting, because this one point nine million is, um, part of our calculation for our fund balance, and, um, state code only wants us to keep twenty-five percent, and so I'd like to move this out, um, into the capital improvement fund, and then if those projects are approved, then we can get moving forward, but I'm gonna propose a budget amendment in two weeks to get that out of the general fund. So the beginning date is, uh, what you're working on? It could, yeah. It doesn't have to be spent in, uh, in the, um, fiscal year?
No, once it's capital, it can roll over from year to year.
It can roll over, it can be, yeah, and if, if things take... As long as the project has been designated and approved. Yeah, yeah, well, like I said, we just need to move it out of the general fund and put it in the capital improvement fund, and then the enterprise funds, those, we have that all the time, sometimes the project goes over years or different things, and they're in their own funds, so they're different. Okay, so, yep.
Can I address just a couple things?
You bet.
Thanks, Denise, uh, so just, uh, for your information, uh, on our care tax, we have allocated next year's revenues to go towards, uh, finishing the pickleball park. Part of that is, we've done our calculations, that when we move that money from next year, we're still gonna have about a hundred and forty thousand dollars, uh, of money left over, um, when our fiscal year is up for next year. Uh, so with that, and I, we've talked about this before, and I'm hoping to get this in front of you sooner rather than later, but I do want to create, in essence, an eight-year capital plan for parks and recreation needs that will account for, uh, care tax revenues, park impact fees, any sort of thing that is designated for parks and recreation only, so that, um, we have a game plan moving forward on what we want to do with that money. So, um, we're, we're gonna work on that, but I just, just wanted to let you know that we were, uh, planning on, uh, expecting to spend all of the care tax money for next fiscal year on pickleball park, uh, but we are gonna have about a hundred and forty thousand left over. So if there is something that, um, we just feel like we really need to get to, um, next fiscal year, we can account, allocate that, but I, I do want to get a, a long-term plan, so that we can really, instead of just every year saying, okay, we have three hundred thousand, what do we want to do with it?
That's great.
Uh, because some of these things could, we could save up for a couple years and do a larger project in three years, or something like that. Uh, just wanted to make you aware, um, our Class C road fund, we will have just under, uh, what, well, we'll have one point nine million in the fund balance, um, but that is now gonna coincide with our new three-year plan, which Marty is still working on, which is also gonna coincide with the, uh, the bonding that we're gonna do, so we're gonna have millions of dollars to do road improvements next year. Marty's the guy that's gotta figure it all out, because we do have the in- infrastructure underneath that's tied to that as well, um, but just wanted to update you where we were, uh, on our Class C monies. And then, uh, when we get into our, um, when we finish up our city council meeting, we're gonna go into a redevelopment agency meeting, our RDA budget, we need to adopt every year as well. Right now in the RDA, we have two active projects, we have, uh, DoTERRA and the Grove Tower, um, they are both generating more revenue than what we have, uh, committed, um, contractually to those groups, and so what we do, if we've, uh, been getting additional revenue, we turn around and pay down that obligation, so that instead of a twenty-year obligation, it's gonna end up being fifteen years, 'cause we're gonna get it paid off sooner rather than later. Uh, we do have a fund balance there in the RDA, and we're working with Randy Sant, our consultant, to see what our options are with that money, which also could come into play as we have further development out in the Grove. So those were just three items I wanted to touch on real quick, are there any questions?
Well done.
Okay, I think, uh, we take a five-minute break before council meeting.
Thank you.
And I know this, this looks, this is a lot of work, from a lot of people.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the response on that, Denise.
So it's, she does magic, okay?
Good work.
Well...
So, we just gotta keep those sell tack dollars coming into the city, okay?
Yep.
So, anyway, with that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
You have a second, home favorite, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll be adjourned.